So again, I'm sorry I had to pause there. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in line using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. If you're calling into the meeting, I'd like to encourage you to remain on the call, but to also go to a township website by Googling East Hemphill Township and to log in to our Zoom meeting following instructions on our homepage. For tonight's video and audio is being recorded. Also, messages sent via Zoom's chat section will be read in the meeting and the logs saved to be archived with the video. Both will be made available on our website after the meeting. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will apply and the meeting will be run by the chairman who will serve as the host on the Zoom site along with assisted by the township manager. Everyone other than the manager and chairman will have their microphones muted in order for audio to be heard clearly. Many people speaking at the same time combined with background noise makes meetings like this impossible to hear. During the meeting, only one person at a time speaks and they must be recognized by the chairman. For supervisors and staff, you will need to unmute your microphone to speak when acknowledged. You will need to remute your microphone when done speaking or if instructed by the chairman. The steps to speak for staff and supervisors are simple. One, unmute your microphone. Two, request recognition by the chairman. Three, after receiving recognition, speak. And four, when done speaking, mute your microphone. Residents and business under comments received ahead of the meeting will be read during public comment or before an applicable action is taken on an agenda item. A resident can also participate in the meeting using the Zoom chat function. Messages received from residents during the meeting from chat will be read aloud just like asking a question. No verbal questions or statements will be accepted during the meeting from residents or businesses, only chat messages. All messages must include a name and street address as required for public comment in order to be read aloud. Again, as a resident to participate in the meeting, if you're calling in, you must go to Google, you must Google the East Hemphill Township website and log into our Zoom meeting that is listed in our homepage. You may select to remain on your phone while now also having video access to the meeting. The chat button is on the bottom right of the Zoom screen. Simply select it and type your comments or questions. To repeat, no verbal questions or statements will be accepted during the meeting from residents or businesses, only chat messages. Any violation of the mentioned rules will be deemed to be acting out of order and your microphone will be immediately muted without warning. Continuing violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. All voting tonight will be done by roll call vote to ensure all votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by the township manager. There will be no action taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arises during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and will be handled at later meetings. Is East Hemphill's intention to continue meeting during the pandemic as required by law when there are agenda items requiring action, which is common to most means? We will utilize this hybrid online meeting format for the time being until such time the government governor lifts his prohibition for public gatherings and we are permitted to meet as we are accustomed to. That's for your patience and understanding as we strive to continue serving the residents and businesses for our township while still complying with social distancing requirements prescribed by our state. So with that, we will move on to our first agenda item and which is the moment of silence and pledge, so please join me for a moment of silence. Now, we would normally go into the pledge of allegiance since there's really not a proper way to acknowledge our flag. I would just encourage people to fly their flag during the daytime as the pandemic has gone on as a show of spirit to our first our first responders as well as our healthcare providers and our nursing home providers as they are caring and dealing with the frontline issues of the pandemic. So with that, we will now move on to our agenda. Our first agenda item is the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to prove routine items that usually require very little debate or discussions. So with that, we'll open it up to the board supervisors for any discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Got two, two quick questions and two quick comments. The comments are, I know that we lost about $95,000 in revenue at the golf course during the month of April. That's a significant, pretty significant number. Just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. Number two, we have a wise use of time by our police department with speeding down and crime down, it would appear. They've used their time to good purposes improving the education within the department. See, there's a lot of that that was done in April. So I think that's, that's great. Two questions are, first for Public Works, is the painting and striping finished, completed in Roarstown? And the second question is for planning, and I don't see Mr. Beck here.
He is here.
Oh, yes, okay. I see that we're, we're expecting a letter from Stonegate condo owners concerning the stormwater plan for review and court approval. I'm just wondering when, at what time that is due.
Okay, so Mr. Madonna, would you like to answer the first question?
Yes, all the lines are painted down in Roarstown and we just did a double check on all the signs that were promised and they are all installed at this time.
Were, were we going to do any sidewalk striping on Elizabeth?
Yes, yeah, the, the piano key striping is on Elizabeth and.
There, there, yeah, yeah, I saw it there, but no, nothing in the crosswalks? And any other intersection there on Elizabeth?
There were none proposed back at the time. That was the only place that, that we had talked about putting any kind of crosswalk, so.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
And Mr. We also got positive feedback from Mrs. Shaw. She has a lot of contact with the residents in that neighborhood, neighborhood, and she was very much appreciative and heard very positive comments from the residents.
Unofficially, it's Mayor Shaw.
I know.
As she, she's the, the patron speaker for words now.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And she does a good job of it. Mr. Beck, can you answer that, that second question concerns Stonegate? I think you're still muted.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett, I didn't hear that question.
One of the Stonegate's stormwater management plans, we're expecting that plan, how much time?
I must apologize, my internet is acting up and I'm getting choppy audio, but I believe.
We actually have the plan, it's been reviewed by our engineer, there are some comments. Those comments were submitted back to Stonegate representatives. We have a meeting set up for, I believe tomorrow.
Okay, so it's just a work in progress, trying to get things resolved.
Moving forward, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other comments to the board for the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. LaFever, go for it.
I would like some clarification under the development services on the two entries, one being 701, the other 791 on Stony Battery Road. And I see that one of them is scheduled for a hearing, as it were, regarding a quantity of truck traffic that I don't know that we were made aware of when we approved projects here. Can I have some clarification on those two addresses?
I believe we lost John. Seven.
He's trying to reconnect.
Yeah, he is. Better?
Looks like we have a frustrated John right now. Can you answer that one?
701, they both have conditional use applications in. 701, this is the second conditional use and it's my understanding that they got granted the 50,000 truck traffic, truck generation trips, but they need or would like more. So that's the reason for their application. The 791, which is on the corner of Stony Battery and Nolt, is asking for that same waiver that 701 initially asked for. Do I have that right, John?
Um, just to clarify, it's, it's 50 large truck tractor trailer trips, not 50,000.
I thought that was kind of high.
Yes, and you are, you are correct, I, I'm not, what'd you say for 791?
They are asking for the same thing that 701 already got.
And to clarify, it's just for heavy industrial, they did not ask their conditional uses not including anything for the amount of impervious area or for connection to the rail or for the large truck or tractor trailer trips. So it's just heavy industrial.
My concern is I don't recall any reference or request for a consideration for that degree of truck traffic, which I see as being a lot for Stony Battery Road.
Well, to that point, they did get a conditional use for 601 for the same thing. And based off of the traffic study, Chris Bauer is still finalizing his review. The current amount of traffic out there already warrants a left turn lane off of Stony Battery onto Nolt Road. And we've had, had preliminary discussions with the developer, but most likely that will come up during the conditional use hearing. But they will be on the hook for a majority of the improvements there along Stony Battery for not only the first project, which they did sell and that purchaser of the property did put up the cost for improvements to Stony Battery, but catalyst will be on the hook as of right now for 701 and 791.
Is, is it thought that there, some of this or some of this traffic would go eastbound on Nolt toward Snapper Dam and the, I'll call it a bridge there.
Okay, not, not truck trip, not truck traffic. Only POV traffic. The only reason, the only reason truck traffic would go eastbound on Nolt is to hit Lynx Avenue to head out to Stony Battery. But I don't foresee any issues where they would need to go east on Nolt Road. I brought that up because KRM did have that suggestion during their, which is the property at the southeast corner of Nolt and Stony Battery. But they, their main entrance is right off of Nolt Road. Whereas 701 and 791 will have main entrances off of Stony Battery Road.
Okay.
So we're basically waiting on the, the review of the traffic studies that we got or what, to actually analyze what the impact's going to be.
Um, we, we are planning on advertising and moving forward with the conditional use hearings in June 17th, barring any change or any setbacks.
Now, that will help facilitate our, our future discussion about how we're going to hold our meetings. We'll keep that in mind that there's going to be a conditional use coming at two meetings from now. Okay, any other discussions of the consent agenda? It's the most discussion we've had of consent agenda yet. Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Some of.
And most of Mr. Bennett, do I have a second? Who was, I'm sorry, who's second? Mr. Wigglesworth?
Yes.
Okay, second for Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Schweitzer, can you please pull the board?
Mr. Weaver.
Hi.
Mr. Bennett. Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Hi, so the eyes have a five, nothing. Next, we're going to move on to visitor business. We have a Shannon say it's concerns about Bowman Church intersection, large truck traffic. I'm a Shay, we do have the rule about no public comment, but you're actually on the agenda, so you actually will be given an opportunity to speak. But we'll first allow Ms. Schweitzer to introduce this topic and then we'll allow Ms. Shay to do her presentation.
So Ms. Shay has been contacting staff for quite some time regarding the intersection at Bowman Road and Church Street. She takes, she has a property on the northeast corner. And she has experienced a lot of the truck traffic entering Bowman Road from church that causes erosion problems at the corner of her property. She's installed some landscape rocks in attempts to stop it. Perry's been out several times with staff to correct it. A few years ago, it's my understanding that the intersection was widened by the township, but the trucks continued to erode that corner. It's, at this point, we're out of ideas to help the property owner. So we're working at the township to potentially consider a traffic study to see what other improvements we might, might consider.
Okay, is Ms. Shay present? I'm just looking for her information on the screen here. I can't tell with some of the, just being phone numbers right now. If you are, please unmute your microphone. Okay, she may not be present.
Yeah, I had advised her that we were meeting at seven rather than six. She had not responded to the email.
Okay. I think it's, I mean, she gave us video, it's all, is pretty self-explanatory. I live nearby, you can see the wheel ruts, we know trucks are hopping over, really it's not too much more you can improve that corner there without actually negatively impacting the corner property at this point. Close driveway right there and brick walls on both sides of the driveway and really I think you're at the limits. Now, then, Mr. Madonna, have you got any feedback on that?
Uh, we have widened that, I think, twice since I've been here. It was actually a lot smaller when I got here. We, our last effort was we did place some of the flatter R4 riprap around the edge to kind of help with the erosion. And we did place the white delineator markers around the curve. It's really tough to, to compensate for bad drivers. I've seen drivers make that turn with not any problems. And then again, looking at the videos and, you know, the markings on the road, it's obvious that there are some poor drivers there. I, I don't know the exact number of trucks that actually go through there. I don't see a lot. But I do imagine that they are going to the construction site. They also can go to the, the composting site there on Bowman Road. They're both legitimate places that they need to go. So at this point, I don't, I don't know where to go from there. Again, like you said, widening would be, there is a pole to be moved, there would be right of way that would have to be acquired. Her second driveway in the back does have retaining walls that would have to be adjusted, so I, I don't think it's an easy, an easy fix. I did suggest to Shannon that, you know, when that happens, when people do go up on her driveway, if she could get the license number and go after the trucking company to pay for the repairs of the damage they do, I mean, at this point, that's, that's all I, I really could offer, so.
My, my bigger concern, just from a very practical perspective of watching the video, is not so much the truck swinging out. I mean, that person, that video actually showed the truck driver doing the right thing.
Did, yeah.
Hop over, he had, but he had to swing out all the way into the other side. And that's common for a lot of Lancaster roads. The issue we have is it's right downhill of a crest hill. And so a person, you have someone who's being irresponsible and flying up over that hill. They're not going to see that the truck has swung into the other lane. I think that's the bear, bigger concern. I'm normally not too concerned about a truck swinging out into the other lane, waiting for a break in traffic and then swing out in the other lane to make a turn so that they don't hop over a curb or hop over the edge of pavement. But in this situation, if you have trucks, even occasionally doing that where they have to swing all the way in another lane to make the turn and you got a blind crest curve that the truck is doing that on, I think that's probably a bigger concern. Anything, I mean, putting my, my transportation engineering hat on, sometimes you actually prohibit a specific turning movement, but then you gotta make sure there's an alternate way to get to there. Especially for local delivery, just like we were talking about with the, the mulch, possible mulch delivery, mulch pickup that may be occurring, plus there are legitimately reasons why people with trucks could be trying to work their way from Church Street over to Harrisburg Pike. In Bowman, it really is a collector roadway. If we were to, to go about doing a study, basically the only option you have, because really there's no geometry improvements, is whether you're going to restrict the movement and sign a different way for trucks to make that turn. And then obviously still, that means somebody's still going to have to follow it and not break the law by still just disregarding the sign. But that would really mean, when you look going down the road, where are your two options to kind of make it back to Harrisburg Pike? And, you know, neither one of them necessarily are good. So I guess that's where a study kind of kicks in, it's called picking your poison. What's the least objectionable option right now? And sometimes the least objectionable is just to leave things the way they are and, or there might be something, like Camp Meeting possibly could be an alternate route. I don't think the, the square of Church and Main, and Main Street would be a good route for trucks to make turns either. That's a nasty turn area too. But realistically, I'm not seeing too many geometric improvements that can be done at this point.
Is, is any of the PennDOT scheduled work for Church Street come out this far?
It does. But that's really just a resurfacing, not a widening.
I wonder if they were aware of this, whether they might consider some widening there that could possibly help this a bit.
I say that'd be next enough, not impossible. Not even worth the manager asking that question to PennDOT. We're already pushing our limits with them right now with that project, but they typically don't involve themselves on local access roads from a liability perspective. This is basically a township problem. And that's what they'll say back to us.
Okay.
It's a township road. If it was a state road to state road intersection, that would be a different story. But with Bowman being local and the issue really is Bowman Road, PennDOT's not going to touch it from a liability perspective. They're not going to take that on.
As we were looking at this, Bowman Road is truck restricted and we weren't quite sure why other than this intersection.
Is it truck restricted local delivery?
Yes.
Five tons, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's restricted, that's five tons local delivery. Perry seems to think that, that that would have been before, well, it was before he worked here. And the only thing that we can think about it, there used to be a culvert by Stoner Farm, that was redone, it was repaved. So I don't even know that it meets the requirements. So if you're going to, if you're going to discuss a, a study, I think that the truck restrictions should be included as well so that we can actually prosecute. Because we don't have a truck study to be able to go to court with if we prosecute somebody.
I think, I think realistically, like we talked, that Bowman Road is a collector roadway, which is actually designed, you want trucks on collector roadways, but just like we have with Junction Road and some others, just because we've got a road that can handle the traffic doesn't mean that it's got the geometry to handle the traffic. And I think what the, the challenges with Bowman Road is that intersection, both trucks making that right turn movement as well as then trucks trying to make a left turn movement and make it up the hill. Because they, they have very, it's a very slow start for a truck to make that turn and, and try and turn up the hill and again, it's a blind crest curve. So you have a car flying down, make, you have the potential of T-boning a truck. So I think that's really what would, would drive a, a truck restriction, it's not the, the load, so it really shouldn't say five ton, it really should be more the type of truck, which would be more the larger 18-wheeler type trucks, you got, you got different types of classifications if you do.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to point out that PennDOT had asked the question during the review of the Penn State Hospital and Brookside Development's detour plan due to the, the culvert being replaced on, on State Road. They had asked about sending trucks down Bowman Road and we specifically said no because of this intersection.
Right.
I, I, I personally agree with Mr. Russell that this is a more of a safety issue than anything else, make, you know, any turn by truck or and or vehicles with a line of sight, the very short line of sight heading northbound, coming down Church. It's a real, I think it's a real problem. I'm just wondering, instead of going to the expense of a traffic study, does it do with some additional signage in some way? I noticed that on, on, on Church, again, heading northbound, as you approach Bowman Road, there's only about 100 yards or, I believe, between the truck sign, truck restriction sign and the intersection. I'm also wondering if we could maybe put a sign 200 or 300 yards from the intersection. I don't know if that's allowable. My other thought was on, because it is restricted now, is there any way that we could put signs on the back of the stop signs indicating that? As, as making a turn onto Bowman, you, you, that would be staring in your, in, in your face.
I'll answer the stop sign one, because that's a pretty easy one. Regulatory sign, you can't hook another regulatory sign onto a regulatory sign. Each one's got to be their own sign just from an enforcement perspective.
Okay.
I think on the study side, whether, if we don't do, we can put any sign up we want. But Chief is right, you can't enforce it unless you have an engineering stuff. So that's, that's, that's a decision of the board to make. Given who might be doing the study, obviously I will not be voting one way or the other on that, on this matter, so I'm just kind of giving you some advice right now. And I'm really going to leave it to the four board members to figure out what you guys want to do. But if you want to enforce, you gotta have a study. If you want to just put signs up and just hope for people's goodwill, you don't have to have a study. You have to be careful of unintended consequences. If we prohibit right turns, like I said, you gotta pick your poison in a situation like this, when there are no really great alternatives, you're gonna, we prohibit a right turn and possibly even a left turn, even for local delivery trucks, then there's going to have to be an alternative route for them to actually make the moves. And for the right turn movement prohibition, that means we're directing truck traffic down the Camp Meeting Road. And it's basically a wide loop around to get back to Harrisburg Pike. That may be a good idea or may not be a good idea at this point. It's a narrow road too. So those are all things that have to get thought into it. You can simply put signs up and there's lots of signs that municipalities put up, they, they can't be enforced. That doesn't mean they don't help. And then if you want to actually have the police give them the power to place and enforce, then it has to be something that will stand up in the core of law. And that's what the study does.
Well, I'm more, more concerned about improving the safety. I would think, and, and perhaps even slowing the traffic a bit as, as you approach Bowman from either direction, just to an accident, I don't know if we have any kind of an accident record on that there section or not. But I mean, right now I'd be in favor of coming up with maybe a signage plan for, for this issue rather than dealing with a study at this time, maybe a study down the road, but let's try to do it perhaps with just slowing things down and, and asking people to drive smarter.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a, a quick question for the chief and Ms. Switzer. Is it possible that this is temporary or due to the construction off of Bowman Road?
No, I got, I got the impression from the from Shannon that this has been ongoing.
Yeah, she felt that it did increase since the construction, but it has been an ongoing problem.
Would it be worthwhile to have a conversation with the city or with the developer to see if he can work with this to routing the truck? Or is this an exercise in beauty?
I, I have actually talked to Doug Parkin before. When Shannon brought this to the attention of the township, what was it, about 18 months ago? And they, they assured me that they were having all their trucks come in off of Harrisburg Pike. And they they assured me that they were having all their trucks come in off of Harrisburg Pike. Now, if we're still having an issue, it's it begs the question, are they truly coming off of Harrisburg Pike? I don't know.
The truck that she showed the video of, I don't think that that truck was involved with going to Stoner Resort or to the to the construction. That was a rogue truck, but we get back to the same issue that we can't enforce it. Because there's not a study on file.
There is a there is a weight restriction sign on the westbound side of Bowman Road as you turn left from Harrisburg Pike.
Yes, it's posted in both directions.
Right.
Well, we talked about this, talk about this on as a visitor business. We will move this on to old business for our next meeting. We typically don't take action on anything like this anyway. So everybody has two weeks to think this over a little bit more about what we're possibly can and can't do. And let's come back to the table with some ideas.
We have some visitor comments on this.
Okay, let me see here.
The comments that you see in the chat was an email I received from Josh Goleman regarding a visitor business or a public comment, nothing on the agenda.
So basically, so this was, but this is related to this topic. So he had written, an option could be to make Camp Meeting one way eastbound and have trucks travel that route to this lake. Then the Bowman, this would also help cyclists which use Bowman frequently, pedestrians also use Bowman, which has very limited sight distance around the bed, just a thought. Just a thought, Ben, not Ben. Okay, so. We could take that. I'm not completely 100% following everything you just wrote there after I read through it. I think I was making Camp Meeting one way. I'd be honest with you, I kind of think that would be a showstopper with the school district and a couple other people, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Traffic study doesn't sound like a bad idea if it gives us a little bit of teeth to enforce some restrictions there. But not knowing what the cost is. Would that be a first step is to get an estimate or a bid from from a few firms? See what kind of money we're talking about for one intersection. Well, maybe more than one intersection, but.
I'll be honest, this really shouldn't be that complex of a study.
I'd be in favor of something like that.
How about we table this at this point and we bring it up in two weeks? This is really just to introduce it.
And I can get, in the meantime, I can get an estimate from our traffic engineer that we have on on call, just to get a ballpark figure.
You're not, you're not, Mr. Weaver, really talking about a ton of counts or anything like that. You're really just looking at the geometrics. And what's the impact? Because basically, if you, it's like, it's like water. You plug it up in one place, the water is going to go someplace else. So you plug up a route that some trucks are using, they're going to go someplace else. You want to make sure you're not creating unintended consequences when you put prohibition up, so.
Like runoff. But at least I think it would give the the police a little bit of leverage, maybe.
It would be good, Chief, at some point down the road to know which of our roads are truck restricted, actually do have a study. Which we're kind of going off just good faith at this point.
I gave that list and and a diagram to the, I think, the Public Works Committee back in the fall. And we had started a conversation about that. There's a number of roads in the township that we're in the same position. Including Centerville.
Yeah, you and I were got very personal about Centerville discussion.
That one's still hanging out there.
Yep, that one, we did the result. I think we, you and I had come to terms with that one. We need to get that resolved now.
Yeah, and I think that they're all easy. It's just a matter of, I think that some of these roads were restricted decades ago and the paperwork was either lost in transition in different departments. Or they were just signs were just posted and it was more than advisory. But it's hard for Perry and I, I think we have a pretty good list of the ones that we have actual studies on. But I don't, I'm not not sure which group, working group we should go to.
Actually, probably bring that one to planning.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I think we'll we'll table that right now and let's move on to our action items. So we're on item number four of our agenda and is action items. And the first thing we have is Development Services. It's Dutch Valley Auto Works Sketch Plan Approval of Preliminary Plan Waiver. Mr. Beck, are you able to help us now?
Yes, I am. Oh, fingers crossed. Some of you gentlemen, we're on the board a couple of years ago, 2016, 2017, when Dutch Valley Auto Works came before the board back then for approval of a final plan. Basically, things have changed. The owner of the property ended up rescinding the plan because his his plan had changed while he's back before of the township to readdress the issue that he had back in 2016, 2017. He is proposing to subdivide off a majority of the residentially used lot at the corner of Industry Drive and Columbia Avenue. The property is located in the Community Business Center Zone and it's going to get subdivided off and added to the Dutch Valley Auto Works property for use to expand the business. The proposal is to add a garage or storage facility that would be used in conjunction between the residential property and the the business. Coincidentally, when the final plan development plan, it was actually approved, taken all the way through the process. And Mr. McCollum decided to withdraw the plan and did not record it at that time. Like I said, his plans changed and understandably, he went through and did do a permit application to add some some asphalt for parking expansion and did some stormwater management back in 2017 into 2018. A lot of those, a lot of the stuff that was done with the permit and stormwater management would have been accounted for in the land development plan, such as an access easement, stormwater easement and a an easement for the waterline that was brought onto the property from Industry Drive. ELA group has been charged or has been contracted for this sketch plan and for the land development. And I believe Brett Good is attending. And Mr. Russell, if you have the ability to share your screen, you should have the sketch plan. That way, Mr. Good can show the board and the public what the the sketch plan is going to go over and the iteration for this project in 2020.
Okay, Mr. Good, let me make sure I've shared the screen. You have the screen at this point.
You'd like me to share my screen?
You may share your screen.
Okay.
While he's doing that, I did have a question. Is the residual residential lot connected to sewer?
You're asking me a question, Ms. Schweitzer?
Yes, just is the residential lot connected to sewer, public sewer?
My understanding is that it that it is, but I'm not 100% about that.
My concern would be that that if it's an on lot system, where is the second on lot system going to go?
I'm making note of that. Of course, this is a sketch plan submittal. That's something we can follow up on in the re-submittal of the plan if we can gain favorable action tonight. What you're looking at is the proposed subdivision plan. The residents, Mr. McCullough lives in the in the southwest corner of Industry Drive and Columbia Avenue and Dutch Valley Auto Works is on the northeast corner. And right now, the existing plan is showing there's two lots. It's a little over three acres in size in total. It's in the Community Business Center District at 331, 3331 Columbia Avenue. And back in 2017, there was a small project stormwater plan submitted and approved where some improvements were made that Mr. Beck was talking about. Some of those included some additional paving, stormwater management in the form of infiltration trench and the waterline and so forth. And at that time, those were being done. Mr. McCullum also, at that point, desired to build a 45 by 45 garage, a foot garage. And went further on to gain approval for what I understand was to approval to expand the infiltration trench for the garage. So there's the infiltration trench there toward the northwest corner was done to accommodate that garage. But when it came time for him to build the garage and submit the permit for the garage, it became known that he wanted to use the garage for commercial purposes for the business and the permit was denied. And so the purpose of this plan is to subdivide away the the residential portion of the property to be on a legitimate building lot. And then the garage itself, which is shown in the gray, just north of the house, this would be the residential house and the garage is proposed here. There's existing pavement and coming along here. And this is where the existing business is, Dutch Valley Auto Works. The the residential home would be simply subdivided away, creating a smaller legitimate building lot, and then the remainder would be for the business. And so it's it's a pretty straightforward subdivision land development plan with the only improvement really is this garage with a little bit of paving that's already been accounted for in the stormwater infiltration trench. And then, of course, monumentation of the lots, the lot corners and so forth. So tonight, we're before you with this sketch plan to to review it, but in terms of an action item, we're looking for, because of the simplicity of the plan, we're requesting a modification for the preliminary plan process. And I understand we need action on that from the board to proceed. And then we would submit a final land development plan. Pretty much the same what you see here.
Thank you, Mr. Good. Is there any question of the board?
There have been two references to Industrial Drive, and I believe, in fact, it's Richardson Drive where this property is located. And my question is, the garage, the new garage, I can't tell from this, the 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 small features on this plan. Do I understand that is going to be completely on the commercial side?
That is correct, sir. And in fact, this is where my asterisk is. Here is the the existing entrance just to the east of the of the house off of Columbia Avenue. And then the access to the garage is from the commercial side, existing paved area. And so the, there is no, there will be no access, no drive, new driveway proposed from Richardson Drive.
Okay, and is is there a garage facility with the house presently?
Yes, there is. That is my understanding is, I believe, a two car garage attached to the existing residence that has its separate driveway already existing onto Columbia Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
I'm good.
Okay, yeah, you just lit up, so I'm assuming you're about to speak. Any other, any other board members have any comments or questions? You see none? There's no comments or questions via chat right now? Mr. Good, I'm going to unshare your screens so that I get my computer running again here.
Okay, yep.
You've been unshared at this point. And there we go. My agenda back over here. Okay, so the motion we will have is a very simple motion, and the motion is to approve the preliminary plan waiver for Dutch Valley Auto Works Project Township File Number 15 dash 22 dash 03. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion, Mr. Bennett, do I have a second? Say second for Mr. Weaver. Okay, Mrs. Schweitzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Hi.
Mr. Bennett?
Hi.
Mr. LeFever?
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Hi.
Mr. Russell?
Hi, guys have it. So thank you to Mr. Good for his presentation and good luck on preparing the the final plan for this project. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Next up, we have Stoffers of Kissel Hill signed orange petition. Mr. Beck, are you available? Again, there you go.
Claudia Schenk, on behalf of Stobro Company LP, who owns the property at Stoffers of Kissel Hill, the supermarket and home and garden store located on Rursong Road, have filed a petition with the township to amend the East Hemfield Township zoning ordinance to amend the regulations for commercial signage, both freestanding and building signs for commercial development properties within the Regional Commerce Center Zone. At this point in time, this is just a an acknowledgement or acceptance of the board and an authorization of the board to refer or to send this petition to the County Planning Commission and the East Hemfield Township Planning Commission for both of their organizations' reviews and for recommendations. And staff is respectfully requesting that from the board tonight.
And just for clarity, like we've done for all these applications, really, tonight is not something where we get discussed and deliberate. It's really just to pass it on to the planning commissions for them to begin the process.
That is correct. It's simply an acknowledgement or acceptance of the petition at this point.
Ms. Schenk, do you have anything you wish to add? If you don't, you don't have to sign in, but it's up to you.
Nothing that I wish to add. Thanks very much. We just respectfully ask you to pass it along.
Any board comment or question before we take action on this?
Yes, sir. I have reviewed this request and I've done the math. And from the example shown, this would allow on a 60 foot long building, building frontage assigned six feet high, the whole length of 60 feet of the building. Or assigned 12 feet high for 30 feet of the building. I find this objectionable. As a resident of East Hemfield, I do not feel it is absolutely necessary for signage of this type. A business needs to build its reputation for folks to find it and come back and repeat. I do not see signs as enough of a benefit to a business to provide this kind of what I personally consider eyesore to our township. I would suggest that if two feet per lineal foot of a building is to be considered as a basis, then 120 square foot sign on a 60 foot frontage building would seem to be to me, a maximum or at least more appropriate. Thank you. I would not like this to go forward. I don't see, we should expend township effort or any other planning institution review this.
Mr. LeFever. The, I'm not fully sure your interpretation of what's there is correct. Having not had a detailed review of this, that's kind of what the planning commission is there for. That's why we have them there to to review that. The Planning Working Group has been involved with this. We actually had Stoffers of Kissel Hill in our meetings requesting the relief of this because it was in their perspective hurting their business. I think it's best that we let our planning commissions do their job. Certainly, the opportunity for a board member can go to a planning commission and express their concern, but that's really the first step is to let the process go and review. It's really not an up or down time for us. It's really not an up or down time for us to vote on it until we've actually had our professionals and our planning commission chime in and offer comment.
Well, if that must be, then I would consider myself overruled in that regard. Before it goes there, though, they should correct one of the wording in there where it talks about square foot and square foot, and actually it's square foot and linear foot. So I apparently some thought went into this, but again, I just do not see the necessary for what I consider a Las Vegas showfront on Noel Road.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Just crazy.
I'd also like to make a comment, you know, concerning this. I recognize Stoffers has been an important business in our community for a long time. However, having said that, I'm concerned that any modification to a current township ordinance needs to be made with a robust review from its inception by the board's supervisors and its members, and also by a thorough airing within the community. I question whether we should permit any single petitioner to drive an ordinance change that will impact the community on the whole and would be binding to other businesses in other situations. I, like Mr. Weaver, feel that our sign should be fewer and smaller wherever possible. I'm not saying I'm against this, but I am saying that we should look at it very hard and perhaps in a different way. I'm concerned about, in the petition itself, I'm concerned about section six and seven for the most part. And again, for considerations of this type, I also believe that a rendering should be required in the future. Just some thoughts. And I, and I recognize this is generally a routine thing about moving things along, but I do have some concerns.
No, again, the same, kind of the same discussion is that's where this is the starting of the discussion, not the end of discussion at this point. But every person has a right to make a petition related to zoning, and really, in this case, we are having a way too many zoning hearings related to signs. And that means typically there's a problem with our ordinance when we have that many zoning petitions occurring. And according to what my, the discussions are with Mr. Beck and with others, that's the predominant number of hearings that we're having with our zoning hearing board related to sign issues. That means there's a flaw and flaws with our current ordinance. And so, yes, anytime we make a change to zoning, the text amendment applies to that zone or to multiple zones. But really, that's the only relief an applicant has in this situation is to petition to get the zoning ordinance changed, and they do have a right to do that.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I just believe that we're breaking some new ground. You know, this is a new category in our zoning ordinance, and I just think that we should go slow, or perhaps slower.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a couple of comments here. When this came to the planning committee background, we actually asked Mrs. Schenk to put something together that would be more encompassing. This was not hers, because just of what the chairman outlined, zoning hearing issues are getting. So my ask or request would be from the board, like Mr. Chairman, Mr. Russell had said that this is the beginning. Let's outline those concerns that you guys have. Maybe we can pass those along to the planning commission. Do you think maybe if we were going to make a totally different direction, probably shouldn't have done that earlier. I have no problem with making changes to this or taking other input and making something that might be a little bit better. But also, we need to ask the question too, for their perspective, there is fundamental unfairness for staffers right now. People are right across the street, the development there, and the signs that are literally right across the street from where this would be, you know, the sign's not even going to be noticed, and the same with the street with Moses. So I would just say that if we could pass it along to the planning commission, get their comments, let you guys put in your comments, and maybe it comes back to us in a different form that's acceptable to you.
Okay. I would just make your, your comments, Scott, and that's that, you know, I really don't believe that any sign is going to have much of an impact on staffer's business, one way or the other. The sign they have there now or the sign that replaces it, it's not going to add that much business or impact their business to any serious degree, in my view. And then, secondly, I'd ask that a petitioner on anything that comes before us show that there's a burden involved with complying with our current ordinance as written. And if they can show that there is, there is a burden in complying with it, then, then we should be looking at changes.
But just to go back what Mr. Wigglesworth said, just to recall a little bit, when they, when they came before, they did come before us, and they requested relief. So they did kind of demonstrate that they had a, a burden at this point, which is why they were directed to go this route versus trying to seek a hardship with the zoning hearing board. So I just echo again, this is the very beginning of a process. We have not done formal review as a township yet of this, has not been discussed in a public meeting yet, has not really been presented in a public meeting. This is just to advertise it and start the process. So that's all we are talking about tonight, not necessarily kind of picking it apart because it really hasn't been reviewed yet or analyzed, it's just been introduced to the public. And that's, that is the start of a long process.
I would ask, as this must go forward, that folks go and read this more carefully and do the math where the four sides of the building can all be added together for one sign in the front and what the resulting assigned signage would be. And the reference was made here to Lime Springs sign, and I remember the concern that was expressed there, and we found that the sign ended up being not just the sign, but the structure to support the sign wasn't counted in the size of it, and there's extremely massive sign over there. We, we've challenged small entrepreneurs in the township who want a little realder-type sign for their business or other signage like that, which is minor, and yet we have this humongous sign we're willing to consider and change. It's just not fair. If we're going to review the signage ordinance, it needs from top to bottom, and it really needs to be evaluated in the interest of the whole township. Thank you.
I'd like to just add to that. My understanding is we've been looking at the sign ordinance quite some time, so I think in the long term or big picture, we should, you know, get that moving and, and as Mr. Le Fever said, take a comprehensive top-to-bottom look at it and make sure it works for the township. In the more short term, I am kind of concerned about the possibility of a three-hundred-and-sixty square foot digital sign, which is the largest signs that Lamar Advertisings sells are four hundred, well, I'm sorry, six hundred or seven hundred square feet. The next smaller size, which is also for expressways, is around four hundred square feet. So that seems out of scale for Rorres Town Road or wherever. So I'm wondering another two-week delay or four-week delay to have a little more input on this. Doesn't seem unreasonable. Not aware that there's any time crunches there. I mean, are we under any kind of time limit here?
I'm sorry, I've got a crying baby in the background, but I think under this situation, you know, we certainly weren't trying to propose something that would be objectionable, and we had worked with the planning committee to put this together. So I think if there's significant concerns on the part of the board, you know, maybe it would make sense for us to just table this at this time, you know, discuss this with staff and address those concerns, you know, whatever they may be before, before it's passed along, because as, as I indicated, certainly we weren't. And I think, you know, to Mr. Bennett's point, we do have some renderings of the signs that would be proposed. You know, I don't think you'd find them objectionable, there's certainly nothing, you know, like what Mr. Le Fever is concerned about. We didn't include them in the petition because obviously this would impact not just our location, but, you know, I think we could come back with some more information and perhaps address some of the concerns upfront, and we'd be fine with doing that if the board thinks that's more appropriate.
On my part, that'd be awesome. Thank you, Claudia.
I appreciate that. I will just say from a precedent perspective, this would be the first time ever, even for zoning petitions, that we've ultimately had some significant changes to where we, as a board, have not even allowed something to go forward and get the planning commission's input before we even start acting. But that's the will of the board, just we are now establishing a precedent that we've never done before. Usually, we allow our planning commission and our staff to do some reviews and come back with recommendations. That does not mean changes don't occur. But if that's the will of the board, just be careful about the new process that we're establishing.
And I understand from Mrs. Schenk's comments that the actual rendering is something smaller than what this ordinance allows? It must be.
Sure, we could talk about that in more detail. You know, it allows a maximum of one hundred square feet per side regardless of the amount of linear feet of frontage. So I think, you know, we could share some renderings if that's what the board would like to see. We did share those with the planning committee, so I think that may be helpful in trying to understand what we're looking to do here. But based on the planning committee's comments, we did try to make it apply to more than just our track, because it was, I understand that was the direction the township wanted to go.
To go back to your original comment that we're not simulating that one property, Mr. Le Fever.
I'm sorry, what?
To go back to your original comment that this is not just about one property.
Right. It would affect the whole township.
So that, and that's why they're writing what they did. I still think you're not interpreting it completely correct, but that's a different question.
Sure I am, but go ahead. That's fine.
It seems to me the petitioner is willing to push this for two weeks to our next meeting, provide some additional for all of us to review, to help develop a better, and I'd be appreciative of the petitioner doing that.
Would just add, thank you, Ms. Schenk, for doing that. I would just, we all do our homework and we get comments to staff, Mr. Bennett. Concerns are, I think everybody has been in business at one point or another, part is, you know, getting to some place that you've overcome the hurdles and now you have to go and run it all again. So let's make sure next time she comes that we don't end up in the same place. So if we can get those concerns to her, I mean, everybody's good with. Thanks.
And to follow up along these lines, if we table it, let's get the concerns in in a week so that it gives time for staff and for the, the other side to prepare something and be able to have something that we can pass on to the planning commission to start the public review and comment of this process.
That would be appreciated.
Okay. Okay, so with that, I'm not going to, I'll entertain a motion to table.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Motion for Mr. Le Fever, second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Le Fever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye. So I just have a five-nothing.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the police building project loan refinance, Ms. Switzer.
So the refinancing we had brought to you early on, and we had a very favorable rate, we kind of lost that window. We are now, our current loan is at three-point-three-eight percent. Scott Kramer was on with us, and also Frank McCarrelly, our attorney, they've come back and have talked to FNB, our current banker, and it's a two-point-five, two-point-one-five fixed rate, which will realize us about twenty-five or thirty-five, thirty thousand dollars in annual savings. So we have the paperwork before you, it's an ordinance, it's been advertised basically to move this forward to schedule the settlement for the end of June.
We have discussed this in our previous meetings, so is there any discussion of the board at this point? Okay, so we are going to have three action names to take tonight. We're going to be talking about ordinance twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-dash-oh-one, authorization of the refinancing of debt. And then we also have a borrowing of base certificate that is going to need to be signed and a debt statement that's going to be signed. So I'm going to read, I'll starting off with the ordinance of warrants twenty-twenty-dash-oh-one, motion is to adopt warrants twenty-twenty-dash-twenty-one, authorizing refinancing of the police building project loan, with a loan from First National Bank.
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, do I have a second? Second for Mr. Le Fever, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Le Fever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye. I just have a five-nothing. Next up is a motion to authorize the board chairman or vice chairman and township manager to sign the borrowing base certificate, section eight-zero-zero-two, prepared as of May twentieth two thousand twenty in connection with the loan refinancing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Le Fever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye. I satisfied nothing. Last motion is a motion to authorize the board chairman or vice chairman and township manager to sign the debt statement, section eight-one-one-zero, prepared as of May twentieth two thousand twenty in connection with loan refinancing.
So moved.
Motion, motion for Mr. Le Fever, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Le Fever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye. I just have a five-nothing. Next up, we have insurance renewal from EHD, a renewal quote, Ms. Switzer.
Yes. Our insurance for the township expires the end of the month on the twenty-ninth. We typically get the quote from Angle Handbrake in Davies, you have a copy of that in your packet. Last year's expiring premium was a hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. The renewal premium is a hundred and eighty-nine, four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. The broker tells me that the market is fairly hard right now, they're seeing between five and ten percent increases. So this five percent increase is really in line with what they're seeing in the market. There have been increases in our property coverage, our general liability and auto and umbrella. Some of that is the general liability increases. We do have some claims that are out there that they're holding claim money on, which has resulted in some additional premium. I'd be recommending that we accept the renewal premium at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand four eighty-one.
Any discussion of the board? Okay, see none. I will entertain a motion to accept EHD's insurance renewal quote for May twenty-ninth two thousand twenty to May twenty-eighth two thousand twenty-one as discussed.
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Weaver, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Le Fever, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Le Fever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Missed that.
Missed that.
You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Russell.
Aye. So I just had Ms. Switzer, five nothing.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we also have another new one. Copy or lease summary of quotes, recommendation to purchase Toshiba units from Toshiba Business at a cost of 11,500. Ms. Switzer.
Yes, actually I have that wrong. It's actually 11,150 as an outright purchase. We are coming off of a five-year lease of our two printer copiers, one in the police department, one in the admin area. That current leases with quality. And you can see the existing on the spreadsheet. We're paying 4,500 dollars annually. She, this was prepared by Cindy Morris. She had contacted three companies. So we contacted Quality, Colony, and Toshiba Business. Quality sells Kiasara, which is what we currently have. Colony sells Hewlett Packard and Toshiba, of course, sells Toshiba. Toshiba is the low quote in this proposal. We could also enter into another lease, which would be annualized at almost 3,000 dollars. Or because the the pricing is so great right now, we could also purchase it for 11,150, both both units. And then play the annual maintenance per year based on the number of copies we make. This is a color machine. We currently have a black and white. Color is almost now commonplace. Where before it wasn't, it was an extra cost. In fact, if you actually want black and white, it's actually probably higher cost right now. Um, I I it, the 11,000 dollars can easily be fit into our budget right now. I think it's probably something we want to take. If we do the five-year lease, we're looking at a savings of about 42, 4300 dollars over the course of the five-year lease. So.
Might we expect more than five years out of equipment we own and properly maintain?
Yes. And in effect, if we own it, we would not necessarily get one another five years. The Kia Sarah we have now is a very good machine. It's fine. We could keep that one. They'd only be wanting to go out two more years on a lease. It would cost us 3,100 dollars a year. Plus the copy, the maintenance cost, which actually increases as the machine ages.
All right, looks like you did it twice or so.
I'm sorry, you both talked at the same time and didn't catch it.
Mr. LaFever.
I I'm not sure I understood that. At the end, the proposal I thought was to replace two machines, both machines that we now use.
Correct.
But then you said about another two years of something?
You had indicated that we could just keep the machine we have.
No, no, I'm sorry. I meant that if we get, if we buy machines, new machines, in five years, can we continue to use them properly maintained? And that makes the purchase much more sensible to me.
Yeah, if if we were in this place five years from now, there'd be no reason to buy a new machine because the machine we have is perfectly fine. Which I would anticipate in five years, that Toshiba will be perfectly fine for both of our uses. Because they're not, they're not highly used, plus they're also very well maintained. So yes, you're right.
Good question. Um, how old are the copiers that we now have? Yeah, like, how long can we expect these things to last? Bottom.
The copy or year, the copy we have now is five years old. It's a fair market value lease, so it's not a zero, that it's not a zero lease. So there's still monies we'd have to pay in a lease payment. And that would cost us 3,100 dollars a year, plus the maintenance component of that, which is per copy, and that gets higher as the years go by.
Basically, with the three-year lease, we could possibly get an extra two years out of it. So what you're saying, Mr. LaFever?
No, I'm saying buy new ones and in five years, keep them for another five years. And therefore, give half the cost.
Right.
My question is, are they going to last 10 years?
Well.
No. They become after a period of time, they become what's called functionally obsolete, even though you're not spending money on buying your cost of maintenance and copying, get to a point where it's cheaper to buy another one. But you should get more than five years out of it.
Yes, you should.
It's like an automobile. You you tend to take into the shop a little more when they get more mileage. Yeah.
So any more discussion at this point? We have our staff recommending that we purchase it outright and not incurred additional financing charges. So seeing none, I will entertain a motion to authorize staff to purchase a Toshiba copier printer used from the Toshiba business at a cost of 11,150 dollars, as discussed tonight.
So move.
And motion for Mr. LaFever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye. So there you go, Ms. Switzer. I satisfied nothing. Okay, next up, under, we have nothing under old business, and now we go under new business. And I'm sorry, do we have something for old business?
Well, actually, I did add one more thing to the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I skipped over it. Walk, yep. So.
Order walks. No.
Order walks, letter of intent to submit grant application for grant funding to develop a plan to improve the walkability of Landisville area. Ms. Switzer, sorry about that.
So this is simply just a letter of intent to file the grant application. It's due, excuse me, it's due on the 22nd. There's a planning grant. And what we'd like to use it for is looking at Main Street in Landisville, the sidewalks and pedestrian movement as well as bicycle movement. And what we'll be looking for is is how that all functions, how the AHR Park, the pool, the school, all kind of work together to get people from point A to point B. The grant is between 5 and 20,000 dollars. It needs to be submitted by July. And it's probably going to be awarded awarded in August or September.
And this is something that the planning working group has been discussing with Ms. Switzer. Uh, we also have the Mill Creek Trail that is going to be going in with these conditional use applications that we're going to be talking about in a couple of weeks. Uh, there's all deferred sidewalk or trail along Stony Battery right now that is going to be in the process of being called in to be constructed, which would give a connection for the Mill Creek development to Landisville itself. Uh, so even though Mill Creek is a Landisville zip, there's really walk from Mill Creek uh, to Landisville because of uh, the dangers that we had just talked about earlier in the meeting with Church Street and the Blind Curve Hill that currently exists there right now. Uh, so this would provide a route that would get around the issues with Church Street, would connect Mill Creek to Landisville, Landisville to the school district, school district, Landisville and Mill Creek, all connected to AHR Park. And realistically, with exception of some broken areas within Landisville itself, there's already now a connection between AHR Park all the way to the school district. Uh, and this is just basically going to fill in some of the gaps. And it's just a study to analyze what we have right now. Mr. Wigglesworth, I don't know if you have anything you wish to add, since you've been kind of our champion of trails right now.
Come on forward. Let's move forward.
Okay, any discussions? This is simply a grant application. Okay, seeing none, and I've actually got a comment. That's great. From Mr. Josh Goulam. That's great. Pet and bicycle mobility is great. So thank you. Mr. Goulam. Uh, so the uh, motion would be to authorize the manager to submit a grant application for grant funding to develop a plan to improve walkability in Landisville area using the Walk Works Letter of Intent for a grant application. So is there a motion?
So I'm gonna.
Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye. So I just had a five, nothing. We'll throw a little bit more on your plate.
Here you go.
Okay, now we will move. There's, I see no old business on our agenda. I'm just making sure because our agenda has went through a couple of different variations at this point. So seeing none, then we move on to new business. And it's a reopen Lancaster draft resolution. And I'd like to actually, didn't give him any warning, but I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Wigglesworth, uh, because he's a kind of been championing this one. So Mr. Wigglesworth, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, um, this, um, as we've seen other municipalities about these resolutions, um, I wanted to create something that we could all support and hopefully not be controversial. Wanted to challenge us to think about a particular question. We often hear, um, what if we go back too early? What if we open up the county too early? And I'd just like to pose a question. If we go back too late? When is it too late to open up? Is it possible for us to damage the economy to the point that it's going to take a decade or more to recover? We are now on the edge of severe urban blight, financial ruins of millions, and the disappearance of mom and pop shops. Question if many of them are going to be able to make it back. State's top-down approach, and this is a difficult situation. It has been riddled with mistakes and unfairness. Lancaster is suffering severe economic hardship right now. And really, one of the main decisions made by the state requiring nursing home facilities, this is not getting a lot of press. To accept COVID patients has been very, has had very, very harsh results. And as everyone here is aware, Lancaster County, our township, we have an abundance of these facilities and for good reason. Lancaster is a place to live. Many want to come and retire here. So, um, with that decision that the state made, it's particularly put Lancaster County in a precarious position. The vast majority of our cases are in these facilities. 75% of the COVID deaths are coming from these facilities. Currently, the ta, the state is not taking that information into account when making their decision to keep Lancaster closed. And it's, it's very difficult to see, um, what it's doing for our neighbors and our citizens, businesses. Our elected officials, I may ninth wrote a letter to the governor. But it was very factual based. And, uh, asking him to look at at these issues and others, making a determination. This is kind of political and heated and there's been back and forth with it. Bottom line is our residents are suffering. I don't think it need to be that way. We, where our citizens are allowed follow CDC guidelines, use consent act. But we can get through this. I think Lancaster County is one of the most prepared counties to handle COVID in the state, if not the most prepared county. From a medical standpoint, um, to a leadership standpoint, um, and a volunteer standpoint. And finally, I'll just say, uh, I did include the district attorney's support for her decision, um, last paragraph. Because she made a tough decision not to prosecute alleged violations of this. The way these orders have written really would have put our police in a very, very difficult situation to enforce these orders. And I think it's, you know, I would hope that we would support our leaders that have been bothering for this and adopt the resolution. So, thank you.
I would like to speak to this, and first of all, I really appreciate what was Mr. Wigglesworth has done. As you all should have received, I reviewed this today very seriously and have issued a different proposal based on what Mr. Wigglesworth did. Primary thing I've done is to remove the references to Lancaster County because we, as East Temfield Township, have no purview to represent the whole county. And the county has come up in the city of Lancaster and the borough of Effordah and probably some other places of a different opinion. That would work as an instant refusal of any proposal we put forward because we can't represent the whole county. I believe what we should do is a softer approach toward the governor, asking just for a yellow status as one step, a step at a time, a step in the right directions, I would see it. I I would like us to consider this softer approach where I think it could be a step toward unity. Every one of us must agree, we need unity in this matter, and unfortunately, there has been a lack of that by some of our leaders that is counterproductive. That we must get together and we must work toward the end of this. And I would say we have been to a certain extent, and we need more patience and progress. I am concerned about the industry as everyone is in, is concerned. But I believe if we can go to yellow and if people will adhere to the guidelines, the CDC guidelines and the governor's guidelines, I believe we would be moving along, continuing in the right direction. So that's my input on this, and I hope we can agree.
I think one thing that's kind of lost in all the discussions is when people start talking about reopening. Right now, reopening means just going amber. So just to clarify that for everybody, as all the sides have been talking, it means reopening means we're just taking the step of going from red to going to amber as the governor has laid out. Amber means, does not mean our restaurants are open yet. Unfortunately, amber does not mean parts of our parks and some of the public areas are open. Amber does not mean that we can all of a sudden have concerts or gatherings of multiple hundreds of people. Amber means for our public meetings going forward that we are going to have 25 people max in a public meeting. Now, we include all the people, uh, that are on this call that typically attend the meeting, plus any guests that would, uh, come and visit the meeting. That's not a lot of people. Especially when we have one of our bigger hearings that, some of which are going to come this summertime. So amber is not a huge step in the one direction. Anything it does is it allows the businesses that are currently closed minus what we had just talked about, those that are involved large congregating of people. To be able to do what the Targets and the Walmarts and others are currently doing, which is sell their goods in a CDC set environment with people wearing masks, with the shields between the person who's running the register and the person who's buying the cleaning carts and the cleaning of the facilities to follow CDC guidelines, stuff that businesses are already knowing. And there are a number of businesses right now that are not being given that opportunity while they watch their neighbor who've got a waiver or has been deemed essential, be able to do that. And that's kind of the fairness part of it. There's realistically, we're not really doing anything at this point with the, this guideline of actually protecting our residents in the nursing homes. With 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 what is actually occurring right now. And that's really who are most vulnerable. What that's going to look like and how that shakes out in the weeks ahead, that's the debate and discussion. And hopefully, cool heads will prevail to allow it to be a nonpartisan debate or discussion so that we can do what's in the best interest for the community while at the same time still protecting those that are most at risk, which are the ones that are in our nursing homes right now where the, the pandemic took hold. So I think that's the challenge is when we talk about reopening Lancaster, it's not going back to the way it was pre-March. Uh, it's not going back to the way things operate. It's a, it's what we call a new normal. And a new normal is us, when we're in public, wearing our face mask um, and doing what we can as a personal responsibility to head off the virus. And that's really the only way it's going to work. I mean, government. I mean, government can mandate things, but people don't. Follow them and take personal responsibility for them. They're not going to. And if you make things too onerous, then people just start disregarding everything. It's like we've talked about in the past, if you put too many signs up on the street, then people just ignore all. So. I think that's a discussion at this point to. Be had at this point. I'm, I've been trying to take a middle of the road. Approach to all these discussions. I'm very interested in. Seeing things open up. I'm, I've been frustrated with the lack of transparency. Especially at the state level with this whole process. Um, I do recognize that, you know. Hindsight and Monday morning quarterbacking is much easier than when you're in heat of the moment, making decisions. And not every decision is correct. And there's obviously some grace you gotta give. To entities when they make bad decisions, when they're still trying to do it in the best of the public interest. Um, and that happens anytime there's a crisis. I mean, people make. A knee jerk reaction. They try and do what they think at that moment's the best and then things change over time. And you reevaluate. And what we need to do is just be reevaluating at this point. Some decisions that were made were good and some decisions were made were poor. Um, and again, it's not necessarily to criticize the people that made the decisions. Cause they were in their minds trying to do what they thought was best for the public at the time. Uh, but we are definitely at the point where we need to be evaluating things and making. Good. Constructive suggestions on how to move forward and then doing our part to implement. The policies that finally do come out and get directed back down to us. Because as we know, at the township level, our power is purely given to us by the state. We have really no ability to enact. Uh, local ordinances on our own. We're only given the powers that the state gives us as a local government to enact. And that includes how we operate in an emergency situation.
A related question to this is what Mrs. Schweitzer has advised us from our insurance companies. If we open up the parks as to how we can handle our liability or potential liability in those instances. My thoughts. Will sign off a waiver, but I'm not sure that that's valid or realistic.
Mr. LeFever, how about we park that one? Cause that's next on our agenda.
I understand.
Okay, that really, that's, that's, that's kind of more of an execution. It's after this discussion. I think the parking rec group has kind of looked at that. Maybe that's why it's on the agenda to talk about.
I could just make a couple of comments.
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, um, first of all, I'd like to thank both Scott and Ed for their efforts in putting together a resolution. I think, uh. The thing is that we make a statement. The township and the efforts within the township to get things opened up. I think, uh, we need to take small steps. I can support the, the, the text of either resolution. I lean towards. Heads a little bit only from the standpoint, I think it's a little clearer, more concise, more on the, uh, going to yellow. Timeframe. And again, there's some, there's some unifying aspects of what is in the resolution. And, uh. You know, it's respectful towards our government, our governor, I should say. I think that, um. We, we at a minimum, we owe that to him. I think he's made some. Wrong calls, but the governor, he's been elected and I think. Their responsibility to be respectful. So, uh, perhaps there's some way we could combine the two resolutions. And again, I say I can support either one. They're just my thoughts on, on the situation.
One disadvantage I have right now is I do not have Ed's resolution. So I can't even call it up the reader right now. I did not receive it. So then Ms. Schweitzer, if you can kind of email it to me, I have my email open right now. If you can send it to my work email. That's what's open right now on my screen. That way I can at least have it up and maybe we'll do a reading of both resolutions.
And me too. I haven't seen it either, but I, I do, I would like to, to see Mr. LaFever's resolution and I also. I like the point of keeping it to Easthamfield Township and not, you know, trying to speak for the county. So. At least that much of Mr. LaFever's, uh, resolution, I would like to see included.
I had one sent to Mrs. Schweitzer this afternoon, attempted to copy it to the five board members. The four and. So you should have gotten it.
Two copies. One is the red line version that compares the two and the other one is, is just the without the, the red line.
Okay. So you just, you just emailed it. Okay. It just popped.
Just a quick question. Did you have an issue with the district attorney's announcement?
I deleted that, um, because. Uh, again, I do not think that works toward unity and she's not supportive of the government. I was surprised. I understand why. DA, she's not the only one, I guess, has taken that kind of approach. But. I just can't agree with that.
I was going to add that if the DA's. Decision was included. That she made the point of saying that. Uh, it is only regarding criminal statute and penalty. She's not taking any position or offering an opinion on civil or administrative penalties, which. Could hurt a business that opens up based on our resolution possibly. And ends up losing their license. I mean, you have to consider that kind of thing. So just because they're not prosecuting, doesn't let everyone off the hook if we did go to yellow. So I'm either take that last paragraph out or include her qualification that. There are still possibly other penalties that would apply.
I think we gotta take one step back. Um, I'm not, I'm not, I'm saying this for both resolutions right now. This is nothing more than a policy resolution that gets sent up to the elected officials, but our. Local officials and it can go up through into the, the governor's office. We have no authority whatsoever to open up the township. As I said, we get our power and authority from the state. Uh, so we do not, regardless of how, what is in our resolution, that does not mean that tomorrow morning. We're directing businesses that they can open up. They can't. Uh, this is just us asking for a evaluation of the current procedures. And to get us to amber status, but we cannot ourselves declare Easthamfield Township amber. At least I would not go on the record saying that we're declaring Easthamfield Township to be amber at this point. So I just, I, I want to clarify that, that this is a not, what's called a non-binding resolution. As are most of our resolutions. It means we're just putting out a position. We're asking for consideration. Uh, but that does not mean that we can just take the township and open it up for business and. Say we're going back to what it was like before March. That's not the case.
Great. And I would just add the. The reason that I put that in reference to the district attorney's announcement. Being in law enforcement prior, I would hate to be in the middle of this and have to enforce these. Regulations or orders. And I was grateful. I really do believe that I had doing that is taking a police. And that's why I included it. So that's, um, the thought behind it. Not that I want all this. See, um. Our guys getting in the middle of this month. And I felt like she made a decision action. Just a long pushman. This.
Okay. Well, what's, what's the will of the board at this point? You guys have both of them before you. Obviously God, I know where Mr. Wigglesworth and Mr. LaFever stand at this point. If I, if we were to adopt Mr. The Fever's, um, one thing I would probably object and would have to be changed, I would make no mention of yellow phase at all. It is basically the Pennsylvania Department of Health guidelines. Uh, cause it could be yellow phase today and a couple of weeks from now, the governor can come out with something new. And that would all be issued by the Pennsylvania Department of Health, which is his arm for his policies at this point. So. Right now we're talking about red, amber, green. And a month from now, there could be a different standard at this point that we're, we're abiding by, or we could have some. Counties that actually boomerang back because they have spike in cases. Uh, so I would just caution about getting too specific on any one thing. Basically we're. Keeping, we should keep it broad with CDC guidelines and Department of Health guidelines.
Clarification, uh, are you saying that amber is, is something that eliminates yellow, that it goes red, amber, green?
Yeah, actually that's, that's actually how it's worded right now with the governor's policy. It's kind of like a traffic light, red, amber.
Okay.
Green.
Well, very well. I'm, I'm, I'm quite satisfied and agreeable to that change then. Sure. Sure. I understand.
So what's, what's the will, guys? I appreciate what Scott did as the basis for what Ed did, but I more support what Ed wrote. I'm generally agreeable to going with this. I think it's common sense, fairly middle of the road approach.
May I make a motion then to approve the revised resolution with the change to amber? And that it would be prepared for the chairman's signature and the manager's signature.
Anything I would ask you to change that resolution is to drop. The mention of amber or yellow. It's, I just read your motion. You're, uh, basically it would be now therefore be resolved, the board supervisor as Easthamfield Township sees a need reopening. Of Easthamfield Township under the protective orders of the US CDC and Pennsylvania Department of Health. That's how it would read. If you drop the word yellow or amber.
Does that not suggest that we're just saying we're going to green?
No, it says following the protective measures of the CDC and what our Pennsylvania Department of Health says.
Very well, very well. Okay.
Specific.
Okay.
How about you, Mr. Wigglesworth? I, I could go for either one of them. So that's why I'm pulling the board.
So I, I made my case. I'm going to vote for either one. Um, I took from. Leaders were bold, um, our county officials, and then I'm going to allege. It's funny, sometimes when you do that, you see other people take a step back. And I'd rather take a step toward them and support them. So that's one of those last two paragraphs in there. You know, that's.
Okay, um, before we go down the road of actually taking a motion, we do have one public comments and keeping with the intent of reading the, the things that show up on chat. Mr. Goom said to us with the town, I guess it's trend of cases and deaths was at Easthamfield Township's anticipated date. Do we know the trend? The anticipated date right now is. Following what the governor has put out, we are at least going to be in red face until. June 6th, I think is next, the following Friday, I think it's six or June 4th, as Cindy holds up four. Four fingers. Uh, so all we can say right now is the trend is showing that. That's potentially our first opportunity to go to amber will be at that time. Or if the governor imposes another two weeks of red upon Lancaster County, which then by default would include Easthamfield Township. What the trends are right now, Mr. Wigglesworth did hit on the head. Uh, the reason we're one of the last in central, south central PA is we have a predominance of retirement communities. In our county, more so by population than other counties. Plus we have half a million people in our county. Uh, so those numbers do cause us to have artificially higher numbers than other counties. Um, immediately around us, which would be York, Adams and others often that had their. Uh, restrictions lifted at this point and have now gone amber status. Um, so by having the, the number of nursing homes that we have in the, the county. And with nursing homes being where the, the battle ended up being fought. At this point and where the, the sickness was basically spread and where most of the illnesses have occurred. That is what's causing our numbers, um, in central PA to be as high as they are. So that, how that all trends, I don't know. Uh, so as I said, June 4th will be, uh. Our next opportunity to see whether we go to amber or not. Governor typically announces that a day or so before.
Can I ask a quick question here on the. On the solution itself. Could we, to, to Ed's resolution, could we add the second, the last paragraph in the. In Scott's recommendation. To Ed's. And would Scott be okay with that?
Well, could you read out what you're suggesting?
Yeah, it would be, be it further resolved that this board of supervisors supports the continued efforts of our state and local leaders. To initiate and institute the ability of each business owner to open for business. With the appropriate safety precautions to protect employees and customers and therefore fully supports. The letter sent to Governor Wolf. One day, the ninth, signed by the elected public officials of Lancaster County. Reasons why Lancaster businesses should have the choice to reopen utilizing the protective measures of the CDC and the Department of Health.
Okay. So that's their discussion about that.
That paragraph to a certain extent is in Ed's version. I think the last sentence is not.
You're, you're correct. That's, he was reading the whole, the whole thing in place. So you just went to, you're correct.
And, and, and my position on that matter is I see that letter as being partisan. And I'd like to stand aside from partisanship in this. I, I think it's time we do. Nationally and state, it's, it's time.
I guess I would challenge that, Mr. LaFever, in that. How, I guess, in what way is it partisan? It's, it's pleading to get Lancaster County back to work.
It's signed by all true Republicans in our caucus. I understand it could be argued, but. It's, it's pretty evident this has become partisan. It's fine that letter signing. And so that letter only could be used to support that argument. I'd like to eliminate arguments to challenge or deny this. And I think that could be an argument in, in the governor's mind, if not in, in his speech. Now we have Mayor Sorenz on the other side has, has been in her opinion, and that's just what I'd like to avoid in this matter. The people who are dying are not of one party or another. They are people who've gotten this disease. It's the disease we, we need to be fighting, not each other.
Absolutely. Um, Mr. LaFever, I'm just, I guess. Part of the frustration for me is. We're looking solely at that. And then the equation and there can be many more deaths when we look back at this that have occurred from misdiagnosis. Or not being diagnosed, no elected procedures being done, all the things that go with the shutdown and the longer it continues and the more that people ask. I guess that's why when I hear like a softer approach, it's, you know, it's been a month and a half. It's, it's starting to get frustrating. But I don't want our board to end up in a knock down, drag out fight or something. That is really in name only and has no teeth or no meaning. So, um, I don't want to belabor this, play with this debate. I think it's time to move along.
Hey, I'm going to read one question because I think it should be answered. It says, it's from Sue, no name, last name given. Do we know that there is current adequate testing capacity and sufficient supplies of personal protective equipment to allow what you're suggesting? So first off, when nursing homes where the battle is actually being fought. The nursing homes now are starting to institute weekly testing of all employees. Happen to know that because my daughter is one of them that's now getting a testing. Will be entering in there because she is going to be going back to work at her nursing home. So there's weekly testing now requirements for. Employees at the nursing homes, which is actually where it needs to be occurring and should have been occurring. Versus some of the other things that have been occurring. As for personal protective equipment, that's something that businesses have been dealing with. For them to open up, it has to be in place. You have to have a plan that gets so prepared. You have to have a plan that gets so prepared. Um, and you have to have the equipment for your employees to actually work in that environment. Um, so, and that's really up to that employer. Again, this is not a resolution where we are opening up township. And I think that's a misperception with that question. Uh, it's just us basically saying that we would like to see these restrictions to start being eased up, which is not lifted, it's not going back to the way it was pre-March, it's just basically going to amber like all rest of Central Pennsylvania. Uh, it does not have anything, uh, to do, we have no ability to force businesses to open, nor we, do we have any ability to, um, circumvent what the governor is doing right now on our end, so. Um, so realistically, I think that answers the question. Nursing homes are doing what they can. Um, and that's statewide, whether they're in amber status right now or red status. Um, they are doing what they can. Um, they were given a bad hand by being forced to take the COVID patients. We do have the University of UPMC Medical Director who has reported that 2% of the beds that were allocated for COVID-19 have actually been occupied in UPMC facilities. Um, so we have, the whole idea of doing the lockdown in the first place was to make sure our medical facilities did not get overwhelmed. Well, that block has been checked, they have not. What got overwhelmed was our nursing homes, because we made the mistake of putting our protection all around our medical facilities, and we left our nursing homes vulnerable. And that's the mistake that state made in Alcare, where that's perceived as partisan or not as fact at this point, especially anybody that's involved with nursing home industry. So, the question is, is the non-binding resolution asking our leaders to work together reopen Lancaster County? And we've also gone on record saying that we will abide by the policies that are instituted to us at the state level, because we execute state policy. Um, so with that, we have the resolutions before us. And so what is the will of the board? I would let Mr. LaFever or Mr. Wigglesworth make the motion.
Um, it seems like Andy is, uh, Mr. Weaver is more inclined to go with Mr. Fever's motion. Mr. Bennett, where are you at with it?
Uh, I'm more inclined to go with Mr. Fever.
Okay, um, Mr. LaFever, why don't you make the motion?
Very well, thank you. I would move to revise the revised revel, resolution, changing the words to delimit, to eliminate the yellow word wherever, and strictly have the US CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health guidelines uh, prepare for the chairman and the township manager's signature.
Ms. Switzer, could you give us the resolution number that this will be?
2020-23.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt Resolution 2020-23, a resolution seeking the reopening of Easthamfield Township with a whole series of whereas. Um, and be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors supports the continued efforts of our state and local leaders to initiate and institute the ability of each business owner to open for business with the appropriate safety precautions to protect employees and customers, and be it further resolved that Board Supervisors, Easthamfield Township, oh no, I'm sorry, and, and period, stop right there. So that is the resolution in its entirety.
Call for the question.
Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
We have a second.
Uh, yes, we have a second, thank you, Mr. Wigglesworth, is it, are you seconding it?
No, I'll let somebody else do that on it.
Okay. Waiting for a second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bennett, so Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett? I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth? That was I?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
Aye, Mrs. Switzer, five to nothing. And moving on to our, see where we're at now for our agenda. Now, we're on to what Mr. LaFever brought up. So, uh, we have Board Group Reports, Park and Rec Group Meaning Recap, Plan for AHR Park and Park and Rec Meeting Group Recap, AHR Trail Extension. Ms. Switzer, if you can start that, and then the Park and Rec Group can speak up.
Sure. So the Park and Rec Group met, we also met with Diane Garber, our Emergency Management Coordinator, to discuss, uh, the plan for opening the parks. Currently, the parks are, the Dream Park is closed, the restrooms are closed, the, uh, tennis courts are zip-tied shut, and the parking, some of the parking lots are block, blockaded. So the committee discussed it, and basically what they have decided to do is not open everything. What we'd like to do is do a staged approach and open the tennis courts and get rid of the parking lot barricades. The restrooms and the Dream Park would remain closed. The next question you're probably going to ask is, until when? I don't know that we have an answer to that, but most likely, probably not until we get to the, the amber phase.
Okay, so Parks and Rec wanna speak up?
Um, I do have one other thing to say about the, uh, the Dream Park. Um, I, I did note in the CDC guidelines, as it pertains to parks and the quit playground equipment, that playground equipment did not need to be sanitized. It only needed to be washed with soap and water. So I do have some, you know, I would like us perhaps to reconsider opening the, uh, the, the Dream Park. Because of the not having the requirement to sanitize. Sanitize is a little bit more, more complex. And I also, and I also note that, that there are a number of municipalities, I don't necessarily enjoy it being a follower, that have kept their, their, uh, their parks and playground equipment open to the public during this time.
My question is how we can have the parks without restroom facilities? Um, I think we could have a temporary notice at the interest of the Dream Park, suggesting that people would use sanitizers, provide some sanitizers, uh, some sanitizer, napkins and things. I, I think we could be considered prudent in taking measures like that. I would support opening them and having them available. Um, I just, I don't know. I think if we're going to open up the Dream Park particularly, even, even the tennis courts, we almost have to have staff managing the toilets and cleaning and sanitizing them. I think we need the toilets, so I think we need to provide the sanitation.
We do have an onsite porta potty that we have kept from this winter, that's still on site. So we do have facilities, it's only one, one, but we do have some things.
From 50 years of destruction, I would say that's worse than our regular toilets, please.
You're probably right.
It, it, it may be worse, but in a pinch, it'll do. Um, and I, and I guess I would say, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of requirements that go into keeping your restrooms open, and I'm not sure that we wanna, uh, commit to that, at this, at least at this point. Um, the other thing I would ask, Mrs. Switzer, is, is there a possibility that we could get a portable hand-washing, uh, facility to post next to the, or near the, uh?
I'm sure we could.
The other, the other thing, the other thing, and we talked about this in our, in our meeting. The other thing about, uh, uh, keeping the, the restrooms open, um, it encourages people to, to stay for a longer period of time. I think we want people outside, we want them active, we want them to come to the park, use the park, and then go home, uh, so that other people can use it. So, um, you know, that's some of the thinking on the, the restroom, I think.
Uh, I just had a quick, a few quick questions. I'm recognized?
Yes.
For Mr. Madonna or Ms. Garber, labor-wise, is there a difference between soap and water and sanitation, other than that sanitizer's a little harder to get at this point? I mean, is, is that much less work?
Well, if, if you don't mind me speaking up first, Diane. Um, I would say sanitizing would be easier than soap and water at this point. Uh, you just can't spray soap on it and walk away from it like you can sanitizer. You could probably spray the park in the morning and walk away, you know, close it for an hour till it dries and walk away from it, as opposed to soap and water. Uh, you know, the, the guidelines for soap and water are you're supposed to sing happy birthday, you know, twice, and how are you gonna stand there and, you know, scrub the handrails, uh, you know, that long in order to make soap and water work? But, um, definitely spraying it, you know, would, would be easier. Um, again, with the, the price and the quantity that you would need for even the sanitizer, um, that, that stuff is going, you know, out of this world. And in order to do it properly, you know, you'd have to do that more than once a day. I think the guidelines even call for twice a day. Um, so it would kind of be intensive. You, you know, it would take you almost, you know, if you would just put one guy in there, it would take him forever to, to spray every touchable hand surface. And, you know, and then if I go and I put three or four guys in there doing it, uh, well, there goes my whole day, uh, with my employees just to let kids play. Um, so again, my opinion only, but, um, you know, to me, I, I just don't know that it's worth it. And it is getting tougher, you know, to find hand sanitizer, even, even the wipes. Um, you know, it's that tough, and you need to offer, you know, wipes at the entranceway to give it to, you know, the people to use, they'd get through them. You know, you open that thing up and you're gonna have 100 kids in there. And that's just what's gonna happen. So again, my opinion only, but, uh, at this point, um, I don't know that it's worth it.
Mr. Madonna, are you talking just about the, are you talking the restrooms or the playground?
A Dream Park.
Dream Park.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you know how much square footage is touchable surface in that area that you would have to figure out something to do in there if you were going to do it at all? And I'm not sure, um, you know, what our, how our insurance felt, and it's, uh, Switzer was speaking to them about it, but whether or not they feel that putting signs up that say use your own risk is an option. But the bathrooms would be much easier. We could do them, you know, I mean, we do sanitize them first thing in the morning before they're open to the public. Uh, probably would be able to close them again, say at noon, and do them over again. There's a lot less surface in there to do that, so.
But we'd also have to do them over the weekend, which would incur overtime.
Correct.
Can we stagger shifts or? Um, you know, have someone be working on Saturday?
We could do that, that's not a problem. I'm just saying, is if that's what, you know, you, you wanna do. I mean, I, I think the idea was to get everybody back to work and get some of my, some of my regular work, you know, started, but, yeah, whatever you guys tell me to do, we're here to do.
Do we have a, do we have a power, do we have a power washer, Perry?
Yes, we do.
Okay, do we have a, can it utilize soap, cleaning?
Sure.
Um, from a playground equipment standpoint, that's what the CDC requires. And, and how often you do it, I mean, I, I, I don't know. All I'm saying is playground equipment does not need to be sanitized, according to C, CDC, as I, as I read it. And I, you know, if, if we need to clean it at all, it just needs to be with soap and water. Uh, perhaps you could do it with a, a power washer once or twice a day. That would be, that would be my recommendation or, or thought.
I, I know we just got, uh, regulations from the PR. Diane, help me out, the Public Recreation
Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society.
Which CDC recognizes, and they're saying playgrounds need to be closed through amber, but they only are to be opened in green.
But they're not a, they're not a legal entity, correct?
Don't know.
They are the state's guidance group for parks and recreation, much like the Golf Association and others. They are that for parks and rec, aquatics and all things recreation and park-based. The other problem with the Dream Park right now is that we remain in the red phase, which is groups of 10 people or less. And we all know full well that, as was stated earlier, when the Dream Park is open, there are easily 100 people in there. Even in the yellow phase where it groups of 25 or less. And that's not something that can be monitored or maintained, nor do I think would be abided by, even if we did put up signs, no mother is gonna stop, walk out with her kids. Uh, looks like there's more than 25 and then leave. So I think that's the additional thing that needs to be taken into account, in addition to the cleaning of the facility.
Did we, did I hear right at the beginning of this conversation, there's other municipalities that do have their facilities open?
Yes, that's correct.
There was a survey done actually today, and if you look in your, your Google documents, uh, there's a spreadsheet in there. Uh, Manor, West Donegal, West Earl, New Holland, Columbia, Mount Joy have their facilities open. Either never closed them or reopened them. Ephraim Borough and Manon Township, they're partially open with some restrictions. And then fully closed is Denver, E-Town, East Donegal, Salisbury, East Lampeter, East Petersburg, Ephraim, and ourselves.
Um, for whatever reason, we'll pull that up. Do, what are the restrictions that Manon Township has?
I'll, I'll read them.
Okay.
Parks and fields and playgrounds are fully open, we never close them. No organized team practices, bathrooms, facilities closed. I would say for the most part.
One of my comments was going to be, um, I did see that list, and, um, good number are closed, a good number are open. There's, there's one where, uh, West Donegal has one small playground behind the township office. It was not closed, but it is also very lightly used, and normally, I don't know if they say how many people use it, it's lightly used. So part of what we need to consider is, that information is, what are we talking about as far as a playground? I mean, I know New Holland's is a dream park-like thing, sort of like what we have. Um, some of the others may just be a couple swing sets, so we don't necessarily know how many people they're gonna get, you know, compared to our Dream Park.
I would just love to say, I'm, I'm with Mr. Bennett, I mean, I follow the will of the board on this. Um, but we told people to stay at home for two months. Um, it's two months now, two days. Um, that they are locked down and they don't have any, anything to do. Um, and this is an opportunity for people to get outside. We have to have faith in our citizens, that they're not children, that they're responsible. And I believe, um, that they are. Um, and I have to give them the opportunity, um, to use these facilities as possible. Um, so I'm, I'm with Mr. Bennett if we can, and if it's just the tennis courts, um, at this meeting, then we might hopefully put some thought into, um, moving forward with the other areas of.
We get a comment from, uh, Mr. David Hughes. He said, "One child dies from the inflammatory disease associated with COVID-19. Southfield will be held responsible, have to clear itself with a civil suit until the PA governor gives the go-ahead." Um, so that's his, uh, comment at this point. Um, I, anybody who gets it, I don't think you can figure our pinpoint exactly where you got it. Anything you could do with tracing, um, which I think Dr. Hughes should know, would be that you would trace who, when you have a, who you came in contact with. And his past persons person, uh CDC has come out rather recently and stated. That the transmission from touching something that somebody else touched is not the primary or may not even be a source now. At this point of COVID-19 is coming from airborne transmissions of one person to another. So. One thing that's very clear when it comes to CDC guidelines is it's a moving target and every time you check, there's something changing. So I, I don't think really they, anybody has a good handle truly on how and what. How is truly transmitted or that, but I, just because there's a one policy in place or another policy in place. It's not going to make the township all of a sudden liable um for anything that occurs in the township. Um, I think that, to be honest with you, is kind of a, a little bit of a silly statement.
The, um, I'd also point out that it's my understanding that townships and municipalities and governments in general. Have substantial protection against lawsuits of, of, of any kind. And again, to your point, uh Scott. How would you determine whether or not you got? If, if there's, I understand with controversy, but how, how, how would you determine? That you got the, the virus from uh? The dream park number, number one, prove it. And, and, and then also, um, and of course, if any one child dies, it would be a tragedy. But as we know. Children are a little affected by this disease. And. So. As children, they have some protection from.
I think one, we always have to weigh the, the, the good and the bad. And I think there are certain aspects of what you guys are proposing that can be beyond the beat, like tennis courts, trails. Stuff like that. Technically, those are not even closed by the governor's policy. So, you know, there, there are certain. Not doing physical activity for many, many months is a health issue in itself for a number of people, especially for youth. So you just have to weigh, everything is about weighing issues and weighing things. You can never make a road perfectly safe. You can never make this. You have to weigh the pros and cons with making decision and decide what level risk is. And then individual parents and others have to decide what they are willing to accept. Even if we open it up, parents will have a decision to make that whether they allow their kids to play there or not. Uh, cause most people have to drive to get there. And I would not, I would challenge, it probably would not be a full house with it opened up because there would be some concerned parents. You also have kids right now, they're seeking activities outside of. Better structured activities that can be done at parks, which have inherent risks to themselves too. As I watched some kids do some rather stupid things outside of my house right now in our neighborhoods. They're gonna find outlets for their energy, especially young boys. And we can either provide them in a safe, as safe as we can make it manner, or we can let them find it on their own. And right now they're finding it on their own. So you have all kinds of rather interesting activities going on in uh backyards and other places that. In many cases, they're probably a lot more dangerous than what we are proposing. I'm still on the fence about opening the dream park and I'm definitely on the fence about opening the bathrooms. I really don't see any reason to open our, our bathrooms up. People can go and take care of their business before they visit the park and they can go take care of the business after the park. And we shouldn't, I don't want necessarily take on having to clean bathrooms on Sunday. Uh, so, but I do think we should be having this discussion. I do think there's some things that we can open up. I see no reason why a tennis court can't be opened up. By default, playing tennis, you're going to get a good six feet of separation with the person you're playing against. So there's, there's certain activities that can be done very safely. Just like we have our. Critical businesses right now, they're operating with the CDC guidelines. You can do something like tennis with uh the CDC guidelines very easily too. Family member, it's a non-issue.
May I suggest that we would open the tennis courts and walking trails for two weeks. And two weeks from now, at our next meeting, we can review whether we want to go to another. Something between amber and yellow color. I'm, I'm colorblind, but anyway, just another step toward where we want to be. I'm not sure how we communicate though, that the tennis court, they're open, that partial park is open, website of course, but.
Well, I, I, I don't, I'm not sure we need to even advertise, you know? I just think we, it would be my, my, we just make a decision. One way or the other, it's open or keep it closed. And that's parks, the trails, the tennis court, you know, the, the infrastructure of, of, of a park. I think we, we, if we want to continue to discuss the merits of opening up the dream park, I, I think that should be a separate discussion. I also think the, the bathroom should be a separate discussion. I have a question and Garber. Diane, on the CDC guidelines for social distancing. It's six feet, correct? And it's 10 minutes around the same person. Is that correct?
That is what they were recently, if they have not changed with the new information that came out today.
So, so, so social distancing isn't that you have to stay away or you can't come close to anybody. The issue is going, doing something in the park where two, three, four people are. Close to each other for more than 10 minutes. That's what I understand this social distancing to be. And I also, I also think that we should um feel that most residents in our, in our community. If we let, if we lay out what the requirements are, um, and we expect them to adhere to them. That's all. And if they don't, we'll, we'll close it.
Well, i- if I may just interject real quick here again, um, some of the things, I mean, we have not closed the trails. Even the small tot lot stuff, we haven't really wrote that off. The only thing that is technically closed in um the park itself is the dream park, the bathrooms. And I believe we have closed the tennis courts, but there have been people doing volleyball. A- any other number of things there, so it, it's not like we have restricted the entire park. The only thing, again, the major thing is the dream park that, that was totally closed off, so just, you know.
I, I, I hear you. I, I do think however, that when you, when you barricaded the parking lot, you're telling people, you're, you're keeping some segment of, of our residents away from the park. People who can't, you know, or don't have the ability to walk there, so.
Is this right?
We haven't talked about Bachi.
We, we did, we did, we did at our meeting, not much going on with Bachi. It seems, it seems like it's a little older uh population that's dealing with, with that.
Mrs. Schweitzer, did we speak to our solicitor at all?
No, we did not.
Um, so maybe as Mr. LaFever suggested, maybe we um move forward with the recommendation of um the parks and rec community. Today, and if we could speak, I would be more comfortable with going further. If um we actually have a plan to deal with, I would like to open. And I would like to open the basketball courts and basically everything if we can. But I'd like the solicitor to weigh in on that. Um, and I'd like us to actually have a plan um on how we're going to uh clean it. Any, any monitoring that we're going to do to it, if we're going to do anything, so um. It seems right now from what I'm hearing, um, I understand we have to clean the facility.
Oh, that's not correct. We don't have to do any cleaning.
Okay.
Unless you open the bathrooms.
Well, except the bathroom, right, if we open the bathrooms.
Or the tot lot.
I'm not quite sure what kind of information or, or opinion you want from the attorney. Cause she's basically going to say, the governor has said you're in the red phase. The red phase does not allow anything higher than 10 people. Gathering together. And it's obviously going to be more than 10 if we open the dream park.
10 people being at a gathering, I mean, can 10 people be within 100 yards of each other? If there's not a plan, if they're, I mean, if there's more than 10 people on the trail, technically that would be a violation.
No, 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 you have, you have to be within 10, you have to be within six feet of someone. Just rushing by someone is not. Putting you in jeopardy.
For tennis, you can't get more than 10 people on a tennis court, so. Again, that would be okay, I would think.
Casual, casual contact is not what we're talking about here. We're talking about sustained uh proximity with another person for 10 minutes or more. That's what they, they want you to avoid.
I keep hearing 10 people, so the entire dream park, which is a pretty big facility. No more than 10 people can be there.
Well, it's a contained space. So, and who's going to monitor it? I mean, there's not going to be 10 people in there. There's going to be probably 50 to 75, maybe even 100 on a, on a very nice day.
Right. I guess the question or the point I'm trying to make, suppose there was 10 people in a football stadium.
Not six feet together. If they're all sitting in the same section, then maybe, but.
Right, like I said, I, I think like the 10, is the 10 people like a specific gathering where? I said, I'm going to have a cookout at my house and invite 11 people over. That's a planned activity. I think that's different than a public facility that's large like this where people come in. I mean, is truly having 10 people in that facility a violation?
If it's only 10, then I would say no, but.
Well, there's no one despite that, those people either, so. It's not really a problem. It, it's really just public perception is, is. Is what it comes down to. I, 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 I'm just, I'm not quite sure what you want from the attorney in terms of an opinion. Cause she's just going to go back to the governor's uh phased plan and. Say this is, this is what he's promoting.
Are there any consequences for us?
There is a risk. So it comes down to how much risk do you want to absorb? And like Scott said, it, it's probably very minimal. And if the board says, open it up, we open it up because there's other municipalities that have done it. With no, no problems. But it only takes one.
It may be to kind of bring this kind of wrap everybody's discussion around here a little bit. I think I do like a phased approach. Uh, so Mr. LaFever, I'll make you smile a little bit. I, I do think if we're probably, we're going to get some more answers in a week and a half about where this county is going. Technically, we're still in the red phase right now. We, we are not in violation right now in the red phase of opening up trails. I know we've not closed the trails and I, I. And I know our trails are being utilized. Having parking for people to access the trails would be a nice thing, so it does send a mixed message, so. I think we could very easily open the trails up, open up some of our facilities that do not have the potential of having more than 10 people. Regardless of what the size might, or the facility might be, a tennis court would be one of them. Where we can open those up and I think safely be saying we're within the, the. The, the guidelines that the state has put out right now. And maybe allow staff, I think staff has gotten the message right now that we would like to reopen facilities. And let staff digest that and in our next meeting. We talk about the next things we could possibly open after they had a chance of digesting the dream park bathrooms and some of the other things that got brought up tonight. I don't know if that's an approach everybody can agree to, kind of again, a little bit of the middle of the road. It's opening more stuff up, um, and it's investigating a little bit more.
I can suggest maybe we take three votes. Let's vote on opening up the park. With the exception of, of the dream park. And open up the rest of the parks in the, in the, in the township. That would be one vote. We can vote on. Keeping the restrooms open or not. And we can vote on opening the dream park if. You know, three separate votes. I think that's, I think that's sort of breaking it apart in terms of what we're, we've been talking about here tonight.
So have you made three motions?
This, so unclear, what about basketball?
Open. Basketball courts open. As long as, when you're on the sidelines, you're keeping a six foot distance, but when you're in a game, playing the game. You're moving around. It's a different. Situation. So I'm in favor, I'm in favor of voting all aspects of the parks with the, and voting on that with the exception of the dream park.
And the bathrooms.
Separate consideration. If we want to continue to talk about that, fine, if not, you don't have to.
They kind of have to do it together. Well, can't say all the dream, all the park except the dream park. And be in favor of that and then what do we do with the bathrooms, so.
What do you mean?
These two need to go together.
What, the bathrooms and the dream and the park?
Dream park. Separate from the rest of the park.
Right, separate from the rest of the park, right, okay.
Okay, so what is your?
I'll make, I'll make, I'm, I'll make a motion to open uh all elements of the park system. In East Tenfield Township.
That way include the dream park.
Without including the dream.
Okay, so let's reset that motion again, just to make it for the record. Your motion is to open.
All aspects.
All aspects of the park with the exception of the dream park. And that way include the bathroom facilities right now at AHR Park.
Does not include the bathroom facilities.
Okay, so your motion is to open all specs of, all aspects of the park system in East Tenfield Township. With the exception of the dream park and the AHR Park bathroom facilities. So that's your motion. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Wigglesworth, this Whiteford, please pull the board.
Mr. Russell, you do have some comments if you wanted to do those before the vote.
Uh, the first comment is can you post, can posting be made to use at your own risk? By using this facility, you assume any liability. Yes, that could be something that could be incorporated. But right now we're not talking about the dream park. Um, and that was from Josh Goom. Second was from David Hughes, baseball, basketball violates the six foot rule.
Mr. Weaver.
Two comments.
What was that?
Second comment was basketball violates the six foot rule.
Mr. Chairman, there's also a question as well. Looks at that seat.
Uh, Joe Vosnak, means Department of East Tenfield Township, can he, I guess it's, she asked a question, can he put out a message board to alert residents? What parts of the park are accessible and open? That's the way I'm interpreting her message. And I'm, I'm sure we could put our variable message board up if that's the will of the board. We can talk about that after we actually figure out what we're doing.
Mr. Weaver.
Hi.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Nay.
Mr. Wigglesworth. Mr. Russell.
Hi.
My concern is that follow the guidelines, the basketball would be a violation. It can't be played with that. And we've just agreed previously that for now, we're following guidelines, we're asking for relief. I think the basketball cannot be included.
We're not actually saying that a group of 12 boys can go put, there's, we don't have the. Do we actually have our basketball court right now roped off?
None, just the barricades on the parking lot.
And there's no way we could enforce that. That's, that goes back to my first statement about boys doing what boys want to do right now. If, but if two brothers want to go shoot hoops in the basketball, they're not violating CDC guidelines at this point. Nor are any family members. Guidelines are still there for, the court's open, but you got to follow CDC guidelines. Guidelines state that if you're not playing, if you're not with um family members, then you're not in close contact with one another. It's simple as that. Same thing with anything else in. Same thing with anything else in our park. You want to play a pickup game of soccer or something like that in the park, which we can enforce one way or the other. Guidelines say that it's not going to be a soccer team showing up playing against one another. It's going to be a family playing soccer. That's how I interpret it. I mean, there's, there's no way we can enforce it one way or the other for these open parts of our park.
The motion passed.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, so you got your second motion, Mr. Bennett. So you were, what is it, the Dream Park or the bathroom that you want to tackle next? You said you want to do three.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to open the Dream Park. Actually, let me take that back. Let's go with the bathroom first. I'll make a motion to open the bathrooms in, in the park.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a second from Mr. LaFever. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Nay.
Mr. Bennett.
Nay.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
So if I understand this correctly, Mr. Bennett, you just, you guys voted nay?
Correct.
Um, I vote aye.
Mr. Russell.
I'm a nay. I'd like to evaluate this again in two weeks.
You can do that.
I'm not against it. I just want to see what comes out next week from the governor. Okay, then you got your third motion, Mr. Bennett, about the Dream Park.
I'll make a motion to open the Dream Park. As long as it's open in accordance with CDC guidelines.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, Ms. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Nay.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Nay.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Same responses I gave for the other one. I'm a nay. And I would like to reevaluate this in two weeks. Okay, that was a, I, I guess I get jinx for saying we're going to have a quick meeting at this point. So. Has some very spirited discussion with all these different topics over the last. Hour, two, two hour and a half period of time. We've, what's that?
We have one more comment.
Uh, we have zip ties through the nets at the basketball court. I guess that's a, how we've been controlling the basketball court at this point.
Yes.
I didn't realize that. So they'll be removed.
Okay. So CDC guidelines apply for all aspects of our open park, which are then individual responsibility to abide by. Um, next up is traffic commission report. There was no traffic commission due to a lack of agenda items. And the one agenda item that was potentially a traffic commission report or traffic commission item was handled. As new business by visitor at the beginning of this meeting.
We do have one more thing under park and rec. The trail.
I'm not seeing another message at this point.
I believe it was just an item on our, at our park and rec meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Where, where we made a decision to. Finish off a portion of the trail.
There were several options that were, were considered. The board came back with, uh, if you look on your map, the purple option, which is taking a trail from the end of Naomi, basically the end of Naomi Avenue. And then running it, yandering it down through to the pavilion. When Perry went out and looked at it, he did come up with a, a different solution, which you see in red. It's another option. It's a more straightforward, actual creating a loop. And he feels that he can position that in such a way that would, nothing would have to be torn out. And he's estimating that that he could get that in there for under 10,000. The first version, which the park and rec committee agreed to, uh, would be less than 5,000.
Now for 10,000, are we getting a finished trail?
Yes, that would be, uh, that would be a paved trail. I, I believe, um, we had quite a bit of rap material this year from some of our milling operations. I, I could mix that in with, uh. Stone base for that. So that I, I believe I could keep it under the $10,000. And again, too, you wouldn't be wasting money by having to rip it out later when you put the drive or the, um, parking lot in up there. And it would actually give you a longer trail that would, uh, it would actually circle basically the entire park at that point. One of the other things, I guess, that I, I did have a comment on that, uh, at some point when we do resume operations in the pavilion with. People renting that on the weekends. My, my thought is, is if I paid a hundred dollars to rent the pavilion, um, I wouldn't want. 25 dogs going by the pavilion, barking at my people, you know, who are trying to have an event. Or everybody walking, you know, uh, baby carriages and that kind of stuff right past the pavilion that you're renting. There's already probably going to be enough people there. But again, my, just my opinion. But, uh, I, I think. This would be a actually better alternative. Uh, than just putting a trail in, just to get a trail in. You know, and then having to rip it out again. So.
One thing. Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may.
Bless you, Perry Madonna.
I think, uh, using the rap material is actually an outstanding trail material. Realized it many times in my past experiences on the manager's side. So. You get a very good product with that. It almost becomes like laptop wins and done.
Awesome. Yep, absolutely.
So, uh, we have the original, we have the alternative with, with, uh, Mr. Wigglesworth. This is your head project. Would you like to make a motion?
Um, I would, I make a mission that we go with the alternative on those presented by Mr. Madonna.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Hi.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Hi. So the eyes have a five, nothing. Thank you to our, uh, Park and Recs group for a lot of the hard work you've been doing. And thank you, Mr. Madonna, for, uh, being very proactive. Um, and looking at what the 10 of the group was and then coming up with something that was better.
Thanks for the second look, Perry.
You bet.
Okay, so now I'll move on to agenda manager's report, Ms. Switzer.
I don't have anything to add. You have my report unless there's questions.
I think, um. I think it would be good for us to have another finance and admin meeting next week. Um, and I would like to discuss the, our plan to reopen the township and to go refinances.
So, Mr. Chairman, when you say reopen the township, are you?
I'm talking about everything, plan for public meetings and what's Amber mean for us as a township? Um, I'm going to think positively that we're going to be in Amber in a week and a half now. Whether that turns out to be the case or not, we shall see. But we do need to have a plan for going to Amber and, and, and how we're going to execute it. And that includes how we're going to do public meetings going forward. So I'm assuming right now. Our next June meeting will fall potentially while we're still in the red phase.
Correct.
So the red phase still rules at this point. But our second June meeting, which will include a conditional use hearing. Is going to hopefully fall in the amber phase. And so if we are meeting back at the township building, we need to have a plan on how we do large gatherings in the township. And limit people in the room to 25. So I would just warn everybody that Zoom is not gone away at this point, even if we're back at the township building. Because we are going to have to have a way for people to participate in the meeting. Uh, especially for the ones that could have some rather large gatherings over the summer months, because I anticipate Amber will be through the whole summer at this point. And we do have some issues that will come up that will certainly bring more than 25 people into our township building.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed we had 29 or I believe I might have even seen 30 here this evening.
Yeah, we did have a number of people checking in. That's why I'm saying Zoom's not gone away. Even if we, uh, do the township meeting and that's something we could talk as a admin and finance group next week about how we are going to. Conduct those meetings going forward at this point. Uh, but I would anticipate at least we've got one more online meeting, whether we like it or not at this point. So with that, looking back on the agenda, if there's anything else. We have public comment for residents. Uh, or taxpayers of Easthamfield Township only. And I will read the first one that popped up from Betsy on her iPad. Only put 25 chairs in the room. Uh, she's actually being generous because of my mindset. While we're in Amber phase, there are no chairs in the room. Potentially for the people up front, uh, who have to actually participate in the whole meeting. But we would be, uh, looking at having no chairs, which would actually expedite the meeting a little bit. So that would be one of the things to possibly consider. But we would be, regardless of what we would do, we would be limiting our, our capacity for that meeting room would be 25. Okay, so any other public comment at this point? I'm looking at the Zoom chat and I'm really seeing that. There wasn't anything emailed to you ahead of time, Ms. Switzer?
There was. You have that listed in the Zoom chat. It's the very first one.
Okay, so we've covered that one already then.
No, you actually didn't.
Okay.
Uh, it has to do with the noise ordinance.
I'm not seeing that in the Zoom chat. So could you read that comment, please?
I'll be, this is from Mr. McCull, or Callum, Gollum. He's actually here with us tonight. I'll be calling into the Zoom meeting tonight and wanted to ask, what is the process required to modify and or change noise ordinance for the township? I found out this past Saturday that Easthamfield noise ordinance restricts beginning at 9:00 PM, which in my opinion is early. I also understand the noise ordinance was enacted more than 20 years ago, so it's a bit antiquated and should be revisited. I did some research and all surrounding townships either begin restrictions at 10:00 PM. Require two or more residents from different properties to file a complaint or have a distance set and not an arbitrary property line. He does have some references below in his email. I would like to request the restrictions begin at 10:00 PM and not 9:00. Or if anything, at least on the weekends, Fridays and Saturday nights and potentially holidays. Or another option would be to have the noise restriction start at 10:00 PM during daylight savings time. Just to be clear, my family is not loud. We do however, have several kids who play outside until dark. And we also do watch shows outside from time to time. And the volume is kept at a very reasonable level, but in the summer, it's not even dark at 9:00 PM. Unfortunately, it, it, if it does change, doesn't change, then I have a feeling our amazing police force is going to be very busy this summer. And he lives on Homestead Drive.
I, I will just say one thing that he brought up, um, just for the, the record, because we actually did that with our burning ordinance. I did like how we handle our burning ordinance for addressing complaints. Which required two neighbors, uh, filing, two people filing a complaint that don't live with one another. They are not the same residents. Because one person's noise is not another person's noise at this point. Um, and it probably wouldn't hurt for us to have staff take his. Public, uh, question and evaluate and come back with some recommendations to the board and to keep him in the loop.
And our ordinance does have, uh, requires two people to cooperate.
Okay.
So.
I, I like that. It gets rid of a he said, she said type of fight. So, um. Any discussion of the board or do we just refer this to staff at this point?
Can you hear from the chief on it? I think he sent us an email.
Yeah.
He did.
Yeah, the chief did a great job on analyzing the situation and our current way to. You know, hopefully we will have a chance to. Lay in on it our next meeting. Not sure we really need to do anything.
Now, we typically for public comment do not take action. It gets referred to staff for further, a further discussion. So. We hear them, uh, we can certainly take a look at and have a discussion in two weeks.
There's another public comment, sir.
If, and so this is to everyone, if and when the county moves to Amber, will indoor bathrooms be opened at the golf course? And will patrons be allowed to pay at the pro shop, given that the line to pay would have to maintain social distancing? Also, will the snack bar reopen at that point? Again, with required social distancing? Those are all very good questions. Why? That is why we need to start talking about how we are, and what we are going to do when we go to Amber. I share your sentiment that we need to evaluate things and have a game plan on what we're going to do. My opinion. Any discussion about that, that question?
I just think if we look at the private sector and the way businesses have acted, um, I'm very compatible with it. We should go after them, you know, mark places where people, where they have to stand. Sexy class, those types of steps that, you know, business is taking. Curbside delivery, maybe more open, but. Restaurant, restrooms, limit the number of people that can be in at one time and. Those kinds of things, I think, when we discuss. I should be tasked with coming up with those types of.
And I think for a golf course, to be honest with you, is a little bit different from the Dream Park. It's a lot of senior citizens that use it. And with it being a, however many hour, probably depending how they play, experience, um, there, there's definitely going to be a need. For some of those facilities to be opened back up when they're permitted. So I think that's part of, of our reopening plan. Golf, our golf is now open, public activity. Good outdoor exercise and experience can be done with a group of four, so I'm not violating any CDC guidelines. That's why the governor allowed them to open up. And we got the, uh, anytime we can start freeing up more restrictions in the golf course, the better. So that's. Be another example, some things when you think about. Okay, um, now we have from. Mr. Goom, uh, thanks. Appreciate you looking into this. And then from Sue to everyone, thank you for, I guess, responding. And then back to Mr. Goom. Do I need to take any additional steps to change warrants or will this be agenda item on the next meeting? What we could just say to Mr. Goom is that when it gets added to the agenda, he'll be contacted. That's what we typically do in that situation. So when Steph is ready for us to have a discussion. Mr. Goom, you'll be invited to come back to me. Okay, anything else? I see nothing else for public comment, anything from the board supervisors? Okay, with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting and I will turn the record button off. Thank you.
Night all.